Good evening, welcome to the June 14, 2021 meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Janino. Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Keith.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselski.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Counselor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambuto.
Here.
Here, Quorm is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 7, 2021.
So moved. All in favor, all opposed, so voted. Counselor Powers has a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over this past weekend, we lost a very good friend, Anthony Barasso. While Anthony raised his family, his two daughters and his wife Grace, together in East Boston on Bremen Street, his heart was always in the city of Revere. During World War II, he went into service, enlisted, and went, and one of the battles he was in was one of our most horrific, was the Battle of the Bulge. And Tony came back here, back to Bremen Street. And I was introduced to Tony by, and Joey called him his uncle, he wasn't his uncle, he was his cousin, Joe Delgrasso. As a matter of fact, Joe Del, Tony Barasso grew up at 815 Broadway in Revere, before going into service and moving to East Boston. His heart was always in this city. When he came from East Boston to Revere, it was to get involved in politics and campaign for his cousin Joey. When he wasn't doing that, he was on Revere Beach, any day you'd find him down there with his wife Grace. And subsequently, in recent years, as recently as two years ago, I remember, he'd be down at the Revere Senior Center with his many friends, enjoying a day at the center. So I think it's appropriate that this evening, that we stand in silence in memory of Anthony Barasso, who passed away at 103 years old this past week.
Calendar item number three, a certificate of commendation will be awarded to Parking Director Jim Rose in recognition of his upcoming retirement from the city of Revere.
Counselor Visconti and Counselor Rotundo. You're gonna come up here, let's do it here. Come on. It was his motion, wasn't it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was his motion. Apologize.
Go ahead.
I read the motion.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, greatly appreciated, I thank you very much.
That's it.
Can I read this?
Absolutely. You read it.
On behalf of the city of Revere, on the occasion of his retirement from the city of Revere, from the position of Parking Director, special recognition is hereby accorded to Jim Rose, Director of Parking. It is with great pleasure that the city of Revere offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes for a happy, enjoyable, and well-deserved retirement, and witness whereof this certificate of commendation is gratefully bestowed by the City Council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 14th day of June in the year of our Lord 2021, and of the independence of the United States of America, the 244th. Congratulations.
So, before I turn this mic over to the man of the hour, I just want to say that we all know what Jim Rose did for Revere's parking system. He transformed it, now that's a big word, transformed, but he truly did. We had a disaster, and now we have a parking department that runs like a Swiss watch. So, I am so grateful to you, and I'm very happy, we go back a lot of years, but I'm so happy for your retirement also. So it's bittersweet that you're moving on, but I wish you all the best.
Thank you. I appreciate you, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes. Is it going?
Counselor, how does it feel?
What's that?
Counselor, how does it feel to be home?
You want to do that now?
No. Okay. All right. Jim, I forgot to print yours, you'll have it next week.
That's, that's fine. Thank you very much, Counsel.
That's good, gets to come up here twice, that's great.
Yeah, I have to, I have to come back. Huh?
Okay. Okay, can, can everybody hear me? All right. I'd actually, I'd like to start by thanking the council here tonight, this is an honor that I wasn't expected. When I do a job, my job, the paycheck was the reward. Okay, so one of the things that I want to thank, besides the council, all the councilors here, is Mayor Arigo for giving me this opportunity to take this position, and have the trust in me over the last three years to do it. He took quite a chance on me, and I think I took a chance on him, and we put it together, and we were able to go ahead, and we made a parking department that I know I'm proud of, and whoever I leave it to in the future who takes it over, I think they're walking into a department now that people respect. A lot of people respect when they come in there, and I just can't thank them enough. And another, one other person that I have to thank, who was very helpful and very instrumental to me with the parking department when I first walked in, and I can't thank him enough, is Richie Viskey. Richie Viskey, he was like a guardian angel guiding me through this whole process, he was a huge help, and I can't respect him enough. And the biggest part of the other part of my, my office, the people in my office were a tremendous asset. Everybody that worked in that office, they never missed time, they came to work every day, we worked hard, we all worked together, we're all building the same program together, and without them, it totally would have been impossible. Now, the parking control officers, they're out in the street, they take a lot of abuse, but they try too hard, they work hard with their job. We come in, when people come into my parking department, we try to help people, we haven't tried to make it miserable for them. So whatever we were able to do to help them, I think they appreciated it. I had an open door policy, when people came to my office, most people, some directors may not have let them in, I don't know anybody that came to my office and did not get in. They were out in the hallway, if they were in a horrible mood, terrible mood, whatever it was, I let them in the office, they sat down, and when they left, if I was able to help them, or I didn't help them, they left in a, in a much better mood. And I'm sorry that I'm leaving, but I think the time has come, I want to spend time with my wife, my grandchildren, and take some trips, and do things that I used to do. So with that, I think I'm gonna end it here, I appreciate everybody being here, and I can't say enough, this is quite the honor. Thank you.
We're gonna take a photo. Come on, get in. Go ahead, get in, get in, get next to him. Jim, get next to him. You two hold this, okay?
Okay.
I thought we were gonna speak.
much on the same time that you see heroism in action. So I'm down Revere Beach, and I'm gonna recite to you exactly what happened that day. There was this woman down at the end of the water, the water line, very dark out, the water was cold that day, I was in it, I know it was cold. And you just hear this woman screaming, "Get back here, get back here, get back here,"
All righty, back to the regular order of business.
screaming for this little girl, probably no more than 90 pounds soaking wet, and she was treading water at least 200 to 300 feet out in the water. What you don't understand is it was at 8 o'clock at night, and it was dark out, the
Calendar item number four, a certificate of merit will be awarded to Officer Dave Wilson
water wasn't all that warm, it was actually probably around 48 degrees.
for going above and beyond the call of duty to rescue a 16-year-old girl from drowning
So picture a very small girl, 90 pounds, treading water, 300 feet out in the dark.
herself in the frigid waters of Revere Beach on May 14.
This time, Counselor Rotundo did put this one in, that's how I got confused.
Most firefighters would tell you that, they're not gonna go out there unless they have lights, a boat, and camera.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. I'll keep moving.
Like I said, very rarely do you see heroism in action, because that could have been my daughter, it could have been his daughter, or yours, or anybody's daughter. And I do get emotional, type of guy I am. David starts making his way to the shoreline, taking off his gear, kept a sidearm at hand, and as you can tell, Dave's a tall guy, so he is out there 200, 300 feet from the shoreline, and I believe you were over your head, or getting close to it. And this young girl, if you know anything about people who struggle, because they don't want you to help them, they fight, and they fight hard. Picture that in 48-degree water, in pitch black, by yourself, that's what he did. That's what Dave Wilson did to save this young girl, who was hell-bent, from my opinion, on killing herself. And she was going as far as she could, treading water as long as she could, until he got there. And if I'm not mistaken, you had a hard time bringing her back a little bit for a second, and you're a big guy.
Yes, sir.
And he just said, "Yes, sir," if people didn't hear that, and David, call me George, please. But that said, it could have been anybody's daughter, it could have been my daughter. And like I said, you know, I've seen miracles in life, I'm a nurse, I've seen heroism too, very, very rarely do you get to see it. And I got to see it that night, Friday, May 14, I think it was around 8 o'clock, 8:30. And this girl was so distraught, and so, I hate to use the word hell-bent on, I would say killing herself, if it wasn't because of David, Officer Wilson, that would not take place. He saved her life, he did it in pitch black, and he did it in frigid waters. He is the epitome of Revere Police Department, he is a hero. Give him a round of applause.
Counsel, no, I would like, Counsel President, please.
You want me to read?
I'd like you to do the honors.
Certificate, certificate of merit, now certificate of merit is the highest honor we give here in the city of Revere. In acknowledgement of extraordinary distinguished and meritorious actions, special recognition is hereby awarded to Officer David Wilson, City of Revere Police Department. On Friday, May 14, 2021, you saved the life of a young woman who was drowning at Revere Beach. Without hesitation, you jumped into action and dove into the waters of Broad Sound, which saved her life that day. You have gone above and beyond the call of duty by putting your own life at risk, and your actions will be forever remembered. In witness wherefore, this certificate of merit is gratefully bestowed by the mayor and the City Council of the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, this 14th day of June in the year of our Lord 2019, and in the independence of the United States of America, the 244th. Audit on a vote of the Revere City Council, Councilors Janino, Guanasso, Keith, McKenna, Morabito, Novoselski, Powers, Rotundo, Sorino, Visconti, and Council President Zambuto, voting in the affirmative. Signed by myself, Anthony T. Zambuto, Mayor Brian Arigo, and Ashley Melnick, City Clerk. Congratulations. Representative Janino.
Thank you, thank you, we have one more. And I'm honored to stand here before you today and offer this citation on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Officer Wilson was my resource officer when I was a student at Revere High School, and it's truly an honor to be able to present this to you as your state representative. So, I will read the citation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Officer David Wilson, in recognition of your heroic efforts to go above and beyond the call of duty to rescue a young woman from drowning herself in the frigid waters on Revere Beach on May 14, 2021. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for the future, good fortune, and continued success in all endeavors, given on this 14th day of June 2021, at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Speaker of the House Ronald Mariano, offered by myself, Representative Janino, and State Rep. Turco. Thank you.
I just want to congratulate Officer Wilson, and I've known him for many years, he's been on the police department over 25 years, and when I heard the story, when I was called that evening, it didn't surprise me. And over the course of his 25 years, he's always been selfless, where he puts other people before himself. And in this instance here, it could have been a very different situation, but he inserted himself into harm's way at nighttime, in the ocean, in frigid temperatures, and what I was told is, they didn't know exactly where he was in the water, they couldn't see him. He's in dark clothing, trying to save that poor girl who was despondent, and he didn't think twice, didn't think a moment about it, he put himself in the ocean, and his efforts alone saved that girl who was determined to try to harm herself. And like I said, it didn't surprise me when I heard it, I've witnessed him do other acts in the last 25 years, where he put others in front of himself, and he put himself in harm's way. And again, here's another instance where Officer Wilson put the community before himself and his own safety, and he did that for someone else. And again, the community should be indebted to him, and especially when we saw that tragic event that happened out in Worcester, and thank God that we didn't have the same result here, but Officer Wilson was able to successfully go in the water and save the young girl. And again, the community should be indebted to him. I'm very proud of him, and he's an asset to the police department.
Just take a photo. Just take a photo.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to relocate one jointly owned pole, number 2643 on Hitchborn Street, approximately 15 feet north of the existing location.
We're taking a brief, two-minute ref, one-minute rec. Okay, we're back in action here, this is a public hearing, we'll hear from proponents, name and address for the race.
Hi, good evening, my name is Adel Wahad Nabat, with National Grid Electric, at 170 Metford Street in Walden, 02148, and I'm here on behalf of a customer that we have here in Revere, at Hitchborn Street, who likes to install conduits from an existing pole, and it's for providing power to this new development.
Okay, any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none? Any, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any counselors? Mr. President. Counselor Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President, yes, it is, thank you. Just a question, how come they're only moving at 15 feet?
So, the pole where it exists right now, it sits between a couple driveways, it's right in between the property at 196. Moving at 15 feet will give us the leverage of a shorter distance on the street to install the conduits, and also, it'll move away from any harms in traffic of the driveway.
Okay, it's not affecting any trees that are in the neighborhood?
No, it wouldn't be affecting any trees, there was an existing tree, and it was cut down, the stub is still there, and we will be, it will be removed, so the pole is gonna be in its place from there.
Okay, National Grid didn't cut it down?
No, it was pre, pre-cut.
I remember that. And, Mr. President, if I may, just let everybody know, this is taking care of the condos at 10 Franklin Avenue, which burned down.
Right.
A little over two years ago.
Correct.
And they've already started construction, they're up on the second floor already, and it's coming out almost exactly, there's a few handicap issues that they had to address, and they're doing that, and the place is gonna look nice, and we're in favor of this, and hoping that it comes through tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, any other counselors? Okay, roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the petition of National Grid?
Any other proponents, people in favor? Hearing and seeing none? Any, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, it is. Thank you. Just a question, how come they're only moving at 15 feet?
So, the pole where it exists right now, it sits between a couple driveways. It's right in between the property at 196. Moving at 15 feet will give us the leverage of a shorter distance on the street to install the conduits, and also it'll move away from any harms in traffic of the driveway.
Okay, it's not affecting any trees that are in the neighborhood?
No, it wouldn't be affecting any trees. There was an existing tree, and it was cut down. The stub is still there, and we will be, it will be removed. So, the pole is going to be in its place from there.
Okay, National Grid didn't cut it down?
No, it was pre-cut.
I remember that. And, Mr. President, if I may, just let everybody know, this is taking care of the condos at 10 Franklin Avenue which burned down-
Right.
-a little over two years ago.
Correct.
And they've already started construction. They're up on the second floor already, and it's coming out almost exactly. There's a few handicap issues that they had to address, and they're doing that, and the place is going to look nice, and we're in favor of this and hoping that it comes through tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councilors? Okay, roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the petition of National Grid and Verizon to relocate one jointly owned pole, number 2643 on Hitchborn Street? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambuto.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Counsel, minutes?
The second petition is the same location. Are we all set? All right.
Okay, another public hearing.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install an underground conduit from pole number 62643 on Hitchborn Street, beginning at a point approximately 19 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Hitchborn Street and continuing approximately 45 feet in a northeast direction for the purpose of providing power for a new development.
Proponents. Now-
It is, it's the same location. I think I, we covered it in the previous petition. We were a little bit ahead of our time on there. Thank you. So, this is to install conduits for the new development that we'll be providing power to.
We got it. Okay, thank you. We'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, people opposed? Seeing none, close that side of the hearing. Counsel Novoselsky?
Just say ditto, Mr. President.
Good, good. Okay. Madam Clerk, on the roll.
Shall the City Council grant the petition of National Grid to install an underground conduit from pole number 2643 on Hitchborn Street? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambuto.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel. Thanks.
Good night.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Chairman Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had two items on the agenda. Both of them were voted on unanimously. One was 21169, was voted on favorably from the City Council to allow the expansion and use of an outdoor patio. So, my recommendation, our recommendation will be to vote affirmatively on that tonight.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the City Council grant the relief by the petitioner for 744 Broadway? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
No.
No, Counsel Serino.
No.
No, Counsel Visconti.
No.
No, and Counsel President Zambuto.
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel. Thanks.
Good night.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Chairman Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had two items on the agenda. Both of them were voted on unanimously. One was 21169, was voted on favorably from the City Council to allow the expansion and use of an outdoor patio. So, my recommendation, our recommendation will be to vote affirmatively on that tonight.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the City Council grant the relief by the petitioner for 744 Broadway? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
No.
No, and Counsel President Zambuto.
No.
No, the special permit has been denied. Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met. There were three items on the agenda, which two were voted out unanimously favorable. First item on the agenda, 2370, which is an ordinance relative to transient vendors. So, it was a minor amendment to the current ordinance. Transient vendors and door-to-door have been put into their own chapters. 5.13 will be transient vendors, and 5.112 will be door-to-door respectively. And also, the fees will change from $3,000 and be reduced to $500. I'm sorry, from $2,000 to $500. And if we take a roll call, it was voted out favorably-
This is an ordinance. On the, audit on a second reading, all in favor, all opposed. On a third and final reading, all in favor, all opposed. Roll call on engrossment and on daintment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to transient vendors, doors-to-door solicitors, and canvassers? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambuto.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained as amended.
Mr. President.
Counsel Rotundo.
Through you to Chairman Morabito.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chairman Morabito, I understand that you're keeping 21128 in committee. Is that true?
Correct. Until you, until you-
Well, I was at the, well, I was at the doctor's today. This is pretty straightforward language, very similar to what they have for emergency room. We learnt over this past summer with the DCR that they do, that they do not use various translators. In fact, it was reported by Cheryl Van Dacre on Channel 4. This is a pretty straightforward thing. It's asking for translators for the open meeting law, meaning anybody that has an open meeting, like tonight, we have people translating at home for us. I believe we have two people that translate for the city of Revere, for the City Council. All I'm doing is asking that we send a letter to the state delegation, asking that they look to have this done accordingly. That's all. I don't, I don't see any need for debate on it in your committee or any committee. It's a, it's a straightforward thing. It'd be like saying there's no need for translators at the RMV or for that matter, at the hospital.
Counsel, we get it.
Thank you.
Counsel Morabito, do you want to?
Just to rebuttal, yeah. So, so, when you're a chairman of a committee, or when you're, or if you're a counselor and you put forth a motion, your responsibility is to represent that motion and to come to subcommittee and speak on that motion. Usually, the chairman of that subcommittee will leave the motion, leave that topic in committee or place it on file until that counselor or the maker of the motion speaks on it. So, so, I left it in committee. You could have simply called me and said, can you, can you vote on it?
Morabito has the floor.
If you called me, call, just as I would do, as-
Okay.
Just as I would call you as the chairman, I would say, hey, can you vote this out of committee?
Okay, all right, good. We got it. Counsel Guanasso, you got a point?
The point's very simple. Our rules of order is that it reverts back to the subcommittee. Because it was tabled in the subcommittee, we can't just take it out on the floor without it being removed from the floor in the subcommittee, and that defeats the whole purpose of our structure.
Great. Thank you, Counsel, for the point. Counsel Janino.
Just want to make it a point that I'm recused from conversation on this motion.
Thank you. All right, we're, we're going to leave this in committee.
Point to personal privilege.
State your point. I don't want to debate about this.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't asking for it to come out of committee. I was just asking why it was not. More importantly, having been the chairman of the Legislative Affairs Committee, my style was different. If it made sense, I voted it out because it was for the benefit of the people. Thank you.
We'll, we'll wait a week. Thank you.
Calendar item number 12. Communication from the city auditor requesting various expenditures from the capital improvement stabilization fund.
Ways and means.
Calendar item number 13. Communication from the city auditor requesting various expenditures from the water and sewer retained earnings fund.
Ways and means.
Calendar item number 14. Communication from the mayor relative to an ordinance further amending the short-term rental ordinance.
What's the date?
Calendar item number 15. Motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor and/or his designee meet in an executive session to discuss the city of Revere's electronic security posture.
Counsel Rotundo.
Mr. President, if you take a look at Tulsa, Atlanta, and other communities, they've been subject to ransomware and other nefarious acts. I would like to know what level of security we have. I'd like to speak to somebody about that and go forward during the executive session to ask my questions accordingly. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed. So voted.
Calendar item number 16. Motion presented by Councilors Serino and Zambuto that the mayor request the police department to install a surveillance camera at the West Revere Dog Park. Funding for this request is available through the Dog Park Revolving Fund.
Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty straightforward. There have been some questionable activities at the Dog Park whereby vehicles have been going late at night, and if we can use funds in the Dog Park Revolving Fund, I think it would be a good addition to keep that area safe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Well, I think you've explained it fairly well, so I'm going to leave that alone. Any, any other councilors? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed. So voted.
Calendar item number 17. Motion presented by Counsel Zambuto and Serino that the City Council award a certificate of appreciation to the city's engineering and water and sewer departments in recognition of their efforts in completing major stormwater improvements in the Toscano Avenue neighborhood to correct the flooding issues which have been unresolved for over 20 years.
So, with the permission of the counsel, I'll speak on my motion here. This is quite an accomplishment of, it was 20 years in the making, and it wasn't done. And I know that there's one very happy citizen that's going to say something in a minute, but that's why this motion was in, to recognize the outstanding work, and I want to say the engineering feat that accomplished this as much as the physical work that got it done. Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to defer to Mr. Falzone in just a moment, and I'll save my comments for the night that we present the citation. But basically, Joe Lake, Donnie Caramello, and the entire team of the Water, Sewer, and Engineering Department took an issue that's been existing in our neighborhood in West Revere for at least 20 years, probably more, and they, they resolved it. And Mr. Falzone has been advocating for years and years, and finally, his pleas didn't fall on deaf ears, and we were able to get the issue of flooding near his house and near Toscano, Asti, Geneva, pretty much under control. So, with that, I will, if I can, yield the floor to Mr. Falzone through you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Right after Counsel Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel Serino and Mr. Falzone, and gentleman from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, Joe Lake and Donnie Caramello. Hopefully, I can feel good about this, when I think it was four or five years ago that we actually met down there when I was chairman of the DPW Department. And that kind of broke the camel's back to get a lot of this work done, and I feel good about that. You know, I know Rocco was very adamant about it, and we had state down there, we had DCR down there, Mass Highway, and Donnie, I think Donnie was new coming on board about that time. And he really took the bull by the horns and did a great job down there, and, you know, I know what it's like to get flooded and having ditches cleaned out, and this was a major accomplishment, and I do want to congratulate everybody involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Now, we'll call on my friend, Mr. Falzone.
You all stole my thunder.
All right, but name and address for the record.
55 to, infamous 55 to Toscano Ave, Revere, Massachusetts.
Thank you, sir.
I, well, obviously, I'm here to recognize Joe Lake.
Don Caramello.
Revere hasn't seen work that these, work has what these two people put together as a team. Teamwork goes an awful long way in any major city. These two gentlemen are the engine for Revere. There's a problem, they talk things over, they get together as a team, and in that teamwork, they discuss what has to be done and what time it has to be done. And the fellows that are on DPW, there's a new way that Mr. Lake has presented. If you want to work, you'll get paid from on-the-stage pay. If you don't want to work, get the hell out. And with that statement, kind of rough, but the point was that Mr. Joe Lake does not fool around. This man has been 17 years in service in his tenure, and the 17 years in his service, he had his hands tied behind his back. And I can say that dating with the DPW for years because of the flooding down on Asti and Toscano, I've been in the front lines, and I've known what Mr. Lake tried to present. But because of, there was a name recognition, I'm going to name, name recognition is a good way and it's a bad way, but in any situation, if you have a name recognition and that person is capable of performing that duty, what it is supposed to be doing, then there's no problem with that. But my dear friend Joe Lake had his hands behind his back because there was, for 20, 20 years, 17 years, there was an incident that's been going on, on Asti and Toscano for all those years, and the work has never been done. Because the man that was in charge back then had no knowledge of what he was doing. He was recognized because he knew somebody in Revere, but I'm not going to go that route. Just to give you an idea, that's what name recognition is all about. But anyway, let's step up to the future. Don Caramello, Don Caramello's come in short term, two and a half years, what this gentleman has done for Revere has just been incredible. Never seen a man love work so much as Mr. Don Caramello and all his associates, including Engineering Department. Nick Reinstrich, nothing gets by that officer-
down there, Mass Highway, and Donny, I think Donny was new coming on board about that time. And he really took the bull by the horns and did a great job down there. And, you know, I know what it's like to get flooded and having ditches cleaned out. And this was a major accomplishment and I do want to congratulate everybody involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Now, we'll call on my friend, Mr. Falzone.
You all stole my thunder.
All right, but name and address for the record.
55 to, infamous 55 to Tuscano Ave, Revere, Massachusetts.
Thank you, sir.
I, well, obviously, I'm here to recognize Joe Lake.
Don Caramello.
Revere hasn't seen work that these, work has, what these two people put together as a team. Teamwork goes an awful long way in any major city. These two gentlemen are the engine for Revere. There's a problem, they talk things over, they get together as a team. And in that teamwork, they discuss what has to be done and what time it has to be done. And the fellows that are on DPW, there's a new way that Mr. Lake has presented. If you want to work, you'll get paid for an understudy's pay. If you don't want to work, get the hell out. And with that statement, kind of rough, but the point was that Mr. Joe Lake does not fool around. This man has been 17 years in service in his tenure. And the 17 years in his service, he had his hands tied behind his back. And I can say that dealing with the DPW for years because of the flooding down on Asti and Tuscano. I've been in the front lines and I've known what Mr. Lake tried to present. But because of, there was a name recognition, I'm going to name, name recognition is a good way and it's a bad way. But in any situation, if you have a name recognition and that person is capable of performing that duty, what it is supposed to be doing, then there's no problem with that. But my dear friend Joe Lake had his hands behind his back because there was for 20, 20 years, 17 years, there was an incident that's been going on down Asti and Tuscano for all those years and the work has never been done. Because the man that was in charge back then had no knowledge of what he was doing. He was recognized because he knew somebody in Revere. But I'm not going to go that route. Just to give you an idea, that's what name recognition is all about. But anyway, let's step up to the future. Don Caramello, Don Caramello's come in short term, two and a half years, what this gentleman has done for Revere has just been incredible. Never seen a man love work so much as Mr. Don Caramello and all his associates, including Engineering Department. Nick Reinstrich, nothing gets by that office anymore. Any contractor coming in, they better have all their lines straightened out and all their dots straightened out because nothing's going to get by them. And the same deal with the DPW, nothing's getting by them. Revere is in a new generation. It's going to the 21st generation. For me to make a comment about the old days, nobody wants to hear about the old days. But we learn by mistakes that were made by the old days and we can concur that if we don't acknowledge them, nothing will be done. You'll be stagnant and nothing will perform anymore. So, with that said, I can't, I don't, I can't believe that these two gentlemen are going to be here tonight, so it's kind of, you know, kind of nervous to a point where, you know, it's, I'm so excited just to mention their names because I can sleep nights. After 30-plus years, Mr. John Caramello has his crew down there in heavy reins and they're watching the area so I can have a good night's sleep. And I say "I" is because I'm the one that gets whacked down there every time. All the years, 30-plus years, knocking on doors, my people, my neighbors, you have to come and talk. You can't fight City Hall with one person. We need a bunch of people. Oh, yeah, we'll be there, we'll be there. Obviously, I'm here again. Mic this up. I don't see nobody here. But anyway, it's the way of life. Johnny asked me a question. He had no idea how can somebody live in this area for 30-plus years? Every time you knew there was rain coming down, I looked out my picture window and I'm saying to myself, why, here we go again. It became a way of life. A lot of people say, why don't you move? I do not live in the floodplain. If I lived by Revere Beach, I would have an awful lot of money because every time it's a northeast, I'm going to have to fix my house. That area where I live was never, is, I'm sorry, it is designated as a floodplain, but we never had water down there. Never. I can, the 20 years, the 50 years I've been in Revere, and I also would mention that the best part of my, Joe Lake and Mr. Don Caramello, they were born and raised here. They know Revere like the back of their hand. And they work again as a team. And my team effort is to acknowledge these two gentlemen for what they've been doing for the past 17 years, Mr. Joe Lake. And Don Caramello, two and a half years, Joe took him under his wing and he just read him the riot act. This is the way it's going to be done. And they both agreed as a team effort. And in my opinion, it's working. To the betterment of Revere, you will never, never see a team like this again. Hopefully, we will. But it's just the way, the time and the era that we're in, these two gentlemen, as far as I'm concerned, are gold. So, you have to appreciate the efforts that they, they make. And behind the scenes, there's one other person that, if you allow me to mention him, and I really would appreciate, and I'll shut up. I know my five minutes are gone, so, sorry, Hatta. Two minutes. There's a man that also was a native of Revere. As a kid growing up, his father was a politician. And the name's going to sound familiar, Arigo. So, this kid here grew up and he's seen Revere, he loves Revere so much, he wanted to become a politician. And here's a man with name recognition. He said, let me go to Washington, DC. And he did. He interned with the best. And again, name recognition. He came back to Revere, the people recognized what his problem was. He wanted to be, become a mayor. And people in Revere recognized him and he's a mayor. So, between Mr. Arigo, Don Caramello, and all you guys, we're all winners. So, thanks for listening. It'd be one other thing. All these awards that we're giving out, now, I'm not a, I don't know how to present it, but I would like to see both of these fellows have something like, let's call it a combination of a Joe and Donny night or afternoon to give some awards out and speak very highly. They don't have to hold hands, though. It's no big deal. Are we, are we okay with that?
Thank you for recognizing and you're right to recognize the mayor because he did appoint Don Caramello, chief of infrastructure. It's been a tremendous thing. I got to say that again because I didn't have my mic on. But you were right to mention Mayor Arigo because he did appoint Donny Caramello as the chief of infrastructure and, and it's made a tremendous difference. And the team is a great team, Joe Lake and all the others that don't get mentioned, but they
Like Joe Magliani.
They work hard, too. So, thank you very much. And we'll, we'll have this at the next council meeting and they'll get their certificate.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, no further business.